Podcast, please sign on, so you have your cell phones and join us in the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice. Sorry, right.
My apologies.
You almost didn't make it through that. Um, alright, well, our session is open. Uh, we've got a couple additions and delays or additions.
Uh, three additions. I have an IGA between Lake County and Multnomah County. Budget resolutions twenty twenty-one dash four, twenty twenty dash thirteen, and twenty twenty dash fourteen.
Perfect. Um, first up, uh, we'll go ahead and get this one off the plate. Uh, Dave Knowles, you were saying may not be joining us today, but it's pretty straightforward one. Um, if there's any discussion on this. It's an IGA with Lane County Assessor's Public Website Maintenance. And Dave's left us a little summary, basically all the information that we need. Or all the information he feels. I think we've been doing this for what, five years now?
Maybe a while.
Five or more. Any discussion on this item?
No, let's do that, uh, Mr. Knowles wasn't here. The, it's all pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's just, they contract, we contract with Lane County to work on the Pats. System gives Dave a lot of support and for six thousand, it's actually a pretty good deal.
Property assessment, taxation.
Sweet. I use it a lot. For my job, so I'm probably really beneficial.
This is very reasonable, right?
Yeah.
My only question is how come he didn't bring it to the county council just to make sure?
It's his same agreement that they haven't changed anything, um, so he just roll with it and they, you know, it's the same, same terms, same rate, um, in service. We can do it for a while.
We could always check the county council between now and tomorrow too. Cover the bases.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave. Um, okay, moving on, next item, Jake Beer, USDA. Forest Service, Lake County Contract Services. I didn't get a chance to really talk with Jake, but it's just kind of something that they've kind of done before.
Yeah, so it's mainly for water supplies for the crew to clean.
And mileage.
And mileage, yeah. They provide the tools and everything, I think on page. Going through it, find it. Uh, yeah, past, past fourteen, I guess it would be page fifteen. Gives an outline of cash to the cooperator. And the non-cash incoming. The only cash to the cooperator is based on travel.
So they're open out recreation, open out with, uh, trails, campgrounds, signage.
There he is.
There he is.
They're talking about their process and.
Forest services aren't like.
No worries. We were just going over the travel.
The forest, the forest service.
But yeah, the forest service contract from that to nineteen hundred ninety-six to the, for the, um, fuel mileage.
That's where it's for, nineteen ninety-six. They, uh, we've had a dream with them for about five years now. We've worked on, we've done, uh, we tore some fence out around Lockway, we've repaired the fence. We built, uh, some walk bridges, cross creek kind of bridges, not around, uh, Lower Cawtham Wood and some of their trails. We've cleaned up some of their trails, not to the extent that we've got brush back and that kind of stuff, just picked up trash. Um, we've cleaned up the campgrounds out in northern, south corners. In that tune, we've, uh, we haven't cleaned the bathrooms today, the juvenile crew actually cleaned the bathroom. We just picked up all the big debris in the bathrooms. We cleaned up the, um, actual camp sites, picked up trash, wrecked the gravel out, so it looked fairly fresh. When someone else arrived, we've, uh, cleaned out the campfire, made sure there wasn't garbage or unburnt garbage or unburnt wood that was nasty and, uh, trying to. So, uh, this is just a continuation, but one thing they did add is, um, Paisley, um, the Forest Ranger office there. Doing some, uh, landscaping, all in yards, weeding, and also the Silver Lake compound as well. Um, so they got that to it as well. And we're up in Silver Lake, um, once a week anyway, to take care of Silver Lake park, right on the park department. We take care of that as far as, um, weeding. So that's basically travel, uh, the travel reimbursements. Forest Service is going to provide the gas and oil for our lawn mowers, weeders, blowers, whatever we use. And then they're also going to provide us with all the cleaning supplies because now we're to be cleaning, uh, the restrooms up. And the campgrounds in different places that they've identified for, so that's the toilet paper, the paper towels, the, the gloves, the sanitizer, truck washes, all that stuff, and then make a lot of, just pick and span.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
A lot of travel time adding Silver Lake and Paisley there.
What's that?
It'll be adding some travel time, but if you're already there, I guess.
Yes, which I'm, that's one of Kenny's bigger days, uh, on Tuesdays, he's one of these out there, so he'll be there about six in the morning and just by four or five in the evening. Uh, depending on what they have going on.
How many crew members is he?
Is he meeting someone there or?
It'll definitely take one or two from here, um, and then we have clients up there, so crews can vary.
Yeah.
Depending on what, what time of year it is, who's doing what up north as far as work goes, so anywhere from four to six. Four to six. Sometimes it's just him and another, another individual, male, another male, um, and all, step five as well. They don't get too heavy into projects when it's just Kenny and another person, but they, and he has bigger crew, which is fairly common.
Hey Jake, when you say they're going to supply like the cleaning things, does that mean he gets to go up to the Ranger District and just pick it up? Or are we going to buy it and go on to reverse it?
They have it on hand, so we're just picking it up, not to buy anything.
Well, they know what I can track and bring that, okay.
They'll provide all that.
Sounds good. Alright, um, we can move on to the MOU with the Clive County Sheriff's Office.
That is sixty-one thousand dollars per year, and that gets us seven hundred and thirty bed days in the Clive County Jail. Um, when I first came to Lake County in two thousand and twelve, we were in one, one bed at thirty thousand five hundred a year. Also at that time, our district attorney at the time, um, had a lot of people in jail. So our jail is always full, so we worked with climate, we being myself and, uh, I'm sure a while, we'll work with climate to increase that another bed. And then we tweaked the MOU, the store figure, we were able to have, uh, sex offenders or females over there, or any specialized, um, inmates. But that's changed now, they've got new administration over there, um, and even towards, uh, the prior, um, the previous jail commander. We started moving in a different direction, having clients that we could, or inmates that we could move over there. So today we continue to use those beds, um, on the jail roster, I don't know if you guys, you guys see the jail roster?
Mm-hmm.
Usually on our jail roster down at the bottom, bottom line, it shows who we have over there.
Right.
Who utilizes our beds, we have never not used our beds, so we use all seven hundred and thirty days. Sometimes we have two people over there at a time, sometimes we have three, uh, but we use our beds. And it's good, um, inmate management population for our jail, because you could have an unwilling person here.
Yeah.
Get him out of here to give the other inmates a break in the jail, the enemies a break, um, and it works out well.
Right.
Works out well. Um, although disagreements between, between Justice and Clive County, I had it listed in there, um, back when that it's for my designated. I worked, Bull Bears, the Southern Bull Bears that basically, um, he works with, they make that happen, they don't run by me, who goes over there, I have no.
Right, and just administer the MOU.
Just got the chapter.
Right.
Take care of all that material stuff, yes.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Alright, um, we have the IGA, uh, with Multnomah County, Jake.
Yes, uh, that IGA was signed, I want to say, three, four years ago, um, and what it was, it was, I want to say it was about five hundred bucks for two years, five hundred and forty bucks for two years, um, in a real partnership with Multnomah County. We weren't the only county, there were several counties, um, on the west side, and he started with them in the same agreement. Their cost was obviously different based on the county population of corrections clients. Went in to give us real time data on our workflows, the work we're doing, our assessments, and who we're supervising, all our demographics of our clients. Having had more time today, I would have, um, wired it up on a computer to show you guys exactly what we're paying for. It's a great, it's a great service, uh, all my staff have access to it, so they can monitor the caseloads and see where they're at. Moving, moving forward, um, this is just an extension of what we've already been on for the, it's an extension to, because the agreement was to end June thirtieth. This extended another year at zero cost, because they had some different funds remaining, they lost some different people. An IT department in Multnomah County, so there's some costs that, that they realized, so there's no, it's absolutely no cost to us. For this next list, we're moving forward, um, we have a community corrections directors work group for, um, for, uh, what's it called, a DADA, um, DADA team. DADA team. They've created, um, a dashboard for each county, and it's, uh, Multnomah County, but it's real time. Usually a day or two behind, this new dashboard that we have access to is real time. It's everything's happening right here, right now. It updates, I think, three or four times in a twenty-four hour period. So, um, moving forward, there's not going to be any cost, it's just a, a corrections director association. That's more internet-based, so once I get more fluid with it, um, hopefully the next meeting in July, I'll send, maybe a little presentation on our Lake County population and what you guys do that whole, whole process. Sounds like, it might sound like a hard deal, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of things you can do with it, and I'm just also trying to figure out what the basics are.
Questions? Zero cost is kind of a no-brainer, so.
Zero cost.
Right.
And a good service.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool that Multnomah County is almost, uh.
Sure.
Well, um, quite honestly, uh, when we first began talks about this, the cost was going to be seven, eight thousand dollars per baryonium for Lake County. Marion County was going to be like forty thousand dollars per baryonium. Well, that's when we kind of went through budget crunch, and we had to, they used our budgets, and Marion County pulled out, so that meant that forty thousand was going to be absorbed from every, every other county, so we were like, whoa, 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 we're not doing this. The community direct, the community corrections director at the time, Scott Taylor, he said, we're going to make it happen, we're not going to be responsible, in fact, we're going to get cost down. Well, they got a grant through a, a federal grant, uh, and that helped offset a lot of costs. So Multnomah County took the, into real and, um, showed us down the path and the five hundred and forty bucks, I think it was two hundred and seventy-one dollars a year. When this first agreement started, it was a no-brainer, having that DADA at my fingertips, um, whenever I wanted to pull it up, it was a no-brainer. Especially for two hundred and seventy-one bucks. And they have support staff on hand, so if I have a problem, and we have a problem, they work on it, we didn't have to wait, right, it was, it's taken care of, so. It's been a, it's been a great partnership, and the new director in Multnomah County, Erica Pruitt, she's great, she's all about statewide re correction, so uh, it's been a great partnership, good, and even some of those tri-count areas, it's, I feel it chimes up some muscles between Clive County, Multnomah, Washington, and Marion, it chimes up some muscles of who has the best and the greatest. They're all aboard it, just Multnomah County, and so it's, it's been a huge, huge partnership, good.
So we're back to, uh, Pollock County Jail. Have they, have they raised their rates recently at all? I'd say it's about eighty-four bucks a day.
Eighty-five dollars and sixteen cents a day. They have not, a juvenile department two years ago, and I just got that, um, an email this morning from Dan Golden, the juvenile director, so I'll be bringing that forward um, in the first meeting in July. Their rates were, I don't know, about eighty bucks a day, but, um, a couple years ago, they had to raise their rate based on stuff, the climate, climate, um, so climate detention's a hundred and ten bucks a day. For juvenile, we ran two hun, for juvenile, we ran two hundred and twenty bed days a year, so that's fifty-five bed days a quarter. It comes out to about twenty-four thousand, two hundred bucks a year. But, um, historically, we've had, we've burnt up those beds and then some. So they, they don't increase the rates from a hundred and ten dollars per door, it's, this is very, I don't think, a hundred and ten bucks a day, so we've paid upwards of almost thirty thousand, over thirty thousand for detention beds. And we're not, we're not fudging, we're containing frivolous stuff. It's, at one point in time, we had measure eleven after measure eleven after measure eleven, which was such crimes, um, serious, significantly such crimes happened, and so we had multiple kids in detention bedding such crimes. So it's, I did mention in the budget committee, and I completely forgot, so I walked out of here, but the juvenile detention budget is, uh, one of those that's pretty fluid.
Good years and bad years.
I mean, I have control of it, I cannot lodge kids, um, to save, save us money, but I have to put public safety first and foremost. Not only public safety, but then also safety of kids, right, uh, so some years we pay over thirty thousand dollars, um, some years we pay right on, some years we're in between that, it just depends on.
Last year was like one of the worst ones too.
And some years we don't even, or some, some quarters we don't even use our beds, but just knowing, but we still pay, because that's the agreement. Because, um, we have a bed, regardless whether it's two in the morning, I think all, I'd say we need the largest kid that will be there in about two hours. We can pay, don't say no, so we have dedicated beds, right, the agreement calls for, uh, I'll talk more about this for juvenile. When I bring them on you before, but it plays just for one kid at a time, but we've had, we've had three kids over there at a time. They understand our need and they understand the seriousness of crimes that are being committed, and they also realize that we don't lodge for frivolous things, right? It's, it's serious about taking, um, or us, it's like people do.
Yeah.
Good, good point.
Okay, well, um, with that, I think we've probably done with it.
Bye, enough said.
Enough said. Thank you, Jake, really appreciate the information, it was just, really appreciate the information, it's, it's good to have that. No, no, no worries at all, it's all good. Um, so, uh, maybe we'll do the budget resolutions, step first and help it out.
Sorry, resolution.
No, you're fine, yeah, we, we, as you and I were talking about, we'll do those resolutions first.
Okay, so, sorry for the additions, I was checking some reports yesterday, I thought, oh boy, last meeting before the end of the fiscal year, I passed, couldn't have to do it, so. Two thousand twenty dash thirteen is actually a revision from a resolution we passed, um, a couple weeks ago for our technology department. I missed some materials and services that, um, were coming through on AP. This got added just yesterday, um, it was.
I got a lot of stuff here.
It's a big package.
So, what is a capital outlay?
So, our definition of a capital outlay is something that costs more than five thousand dollars and has a lifespan longer than one fiscal year. Um, given that though, sometimes we can spend over five thousand dollars, but if it's just repairing a piece of equipment and just getting something to the original state of purchase, it's not capital outlay. In this instance, when we first budgeted the technology department, we thought that the new, I think it was the door system.
Yeah, we thought that would be, uh, housed here, but we went with the cloud-based service, that was much cheaper. And then we just upgraded the equipment, so then it wasn't a capital project anymore. So then I didn't have enough budgeted in materials and services, because I just assumed with our best knowledge that it would be capital, and so we just moving the pieces around a little bit.
Uh, yeah, I just didn't know exactly what the definition would be, so.
A lot of times, uh, we're finding with technology, we used to think software was capital, we also used to think like our, our computers and things like that. Over time, the, the accounting world is saying, no, really, those computers and even software maybe isn't capital. But your hardware equipment, like the server, that's sometimes twenty thousand dollars, that is capital, so. So I guess what I'm saying is today's definition, but over time it's different. Also, just for, for information, I have been at the county a while, and in the past, we actually appropriated general fund departments by a total. So it was for technology, it might have been two hundred and thirty thousand, and then it actually didn't matter whether they spent it on materials and services or capital. Over time, that maybe didn't allow enough, um, control, and so now we have been appropriating by category in general fund departments so that it's not just that bottom line for the department, it's actually by category, personnel, materials and services, capital. Provides a little bit more, um, control at your level.
Yeah, some checks and balances, basically.
So how's it saved us money in the long term, or is it just a control?
I would say it made people more conscientious of their budgets, and, and when we had to, like, reduce some budgets, you know, they don't want to reduce personnel, which we don't want to anyway, so they knew they had to make some more decisions in materials and services. Where in the past, you know, they would have just reduced that whole department and not had to think about it quite as much that, oh, I do have to save money in these areas specifically, so.
No one wants to do a resolution and have to come sit before us, so, you know, they just try to stay within their budget, so.
So what this, what this, what this, um, revision does is they.
That was, it was my intended joke, I apologize.
That's good. Um, the one we approved a couple weeks ago was for twenty-three thousand, this is just an additional seven thousand, so it brings that total to thirty thousand. On that, the reclassification of expenditures. Twenty twenty dash fourteen is for public health and all of the revenues that they're coming or receiving through OHA for COVID-nineteen response. So I simplified this and am just saying, in this one federal line, we're going to, and it's been called Kinda McClellan, our system for quite a while. Then I'm going to increase that seven hundred thousand, and then because we're in contract with the health district, that money flows through and is, um, sent to Lake Health District. Right now, today, we have, we budgeted that contract payment being four hundred and fifty-six thousand. We have sent to the hospital five hundred and fifty-three thousand.
So, sorry, excuse me, the resolution is two twenty twenty-one four, twenty-nine and four?
Twenty twenty dash one four, and it's for public health. Um, and it was, this is an addition.
That was one of your additions in your chair, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I threw a lot at you guys.
No, it's, it's my fault, I didn't get your name to.
Yesterday.
I have a O four, so. It's those, uh, it's almost, yeah, it's fine. It's just those four items, you and I were talking about it this morning, those four items, basically.
No, this is the public health, this is public health.
Oh, wait, are you switched to the public health one? You said O four, right?
Twenty twenty dash one four, twenty twenty dash fourteen.
Okay, then, I'm screwing everybody up.
These are, both of these resolutions are for the fiscal year we're currently in, this is for the.
Was being used.
Yeah, this was a.
No, I don't, no, I got one for.
Okay, so let's pass this round.
I just got it yesterday, I don't know what you did, if you want to take a look and ever pass it to me.
Oh, I remember.
It wasn't in your pocket though, it was an addition. So I don't know.
So I kind of, to be honest, I kind of held.
Yes, I probably did.
I held not doing anything for public health, we've known all, all year long that we were going to have to increase their budget with the additional funds. This appropriation actually gives me probably even more than what I need, but just to get through June thirtieth with additional funding that we will get from OHA this month. Plus the significant amount we got last month gets us there. Like I was saying, we budgeted for a contract payment of four hundred and fifty-six thousand. We have spent five hundred and fifty-three thousand, um, to Lake Health District, but we've received almost, well, about five hundred thousand just the last couple of weeks for COVID response that will pass through to the hospital. The size of this resolution, I would typically do a supplemental budget and notify the public. Even though it's coming from another unit of government, just, it, it's prudent to allow that public comment period, I don't have time.
So.
This is the last, the last.
So this isn't coming, this is coming out of, uh, federal credit significant, but.
It is federal, federal money, um, there are some state dollars in there too, but primarily federal COVID response money.
So do, does Lake District have to use this in public health, or can they use it in?
They have to use it in public health, and some of these dollars, in fact, the most recent COVID money we received, which came through DAS, which is Department Administrative Service, not Oregon Health Authority, is very specific to vaccine incentives, um, making sure that we're providing the service equitably across our populations. Um, so it allowed for like transporting people to get their vaccine, um, making sure you reach all those at-risk or, you know, underserved populations, and then incentives. Judy Clark, um, was tasked with writing the equity plan to meet all of the needs at the state level to use these dollars. She is overwhelmed, as you can imagine, with stat changes with, with things everywhere. I don't have any way to write an equity plan for health services. Kristi Albertson was tapped out, and so Judy asked Charlie Twate for some assistance or, or what to do. I'm not sure where they're at in that process, because of COVID money we have in other ways, we may end up sending that money back. So I'm, I'm letting Judy and Charlie Twate decide that, because again, it is very specific how you spend those dollars. Judy said she asked the state if she could hire somebody. I would have, I would have thought for sure that if she dedicated that person to COVID, all of this stuff, but they would have said. I would have, I would have thought for sure that if she dedicated that person to COVID, all of this stuff, that they would have said yes.
How about, how about a person for billing?
But she was told no, and that, which I don't quite understand, and I wasn't involved in that conversation.
Only thing I can think of is it's special money and it will go away eventually.
Yeah, it did, it did, yes, definitely will.
So, so it's not consistent funding, and you'd be out money for that person.
Right. But I don't know how the hospital is going to spend either the DAS money or the OHA money without hiring somebody. That, I mean, yep, not only to track it, but to provide the service.
Track it. Yeah.
Judy's been so tied into COVID, that there are some other services that she is not able to spend as much time in for her staff. And so if if they could, okay, we are going to have a dedicated staff member for some COVID, it kind of puts her back doing what she had done before. So I I know uh Michael Newton had some of those discussions with her, Joey Randall had some discussions with her like that, but I'm not sure where they're at. And now it's very, it's just, it's hard to get it all coordinated. So, I just wanted to give that, that quick kind of thought about the DAS money that came through, that the county signed for this reason. So that's that public health resolution, it's significant, um, like I said, usually I would
Yeah.
take the time and do a supplemental budget hearing, even though it wouldn't be required, because it's another, it's it's not tax money. It's not property tax money that we're making in change, too, it's actually other federal dollars, so.
So Anne, you said in the beginning here that uh public health was over there, uh, what they had there, right?
Yeah, we first, when we budgeted this fiscal year, we we thought it'd be about four hundred fifty six thousand dollars that we would send to Lake Health District from all of the typical state and federal OHA money we received. To date, we've sent five hundred fifty three thousand, so that includes additional COVID money that we've already received. We've got a big chunk of it here recently that I haven't passed on, so.
A big chunk of?
COVID.
And we're not talking the seven hundred thousand?
Yes, that's part of the seven hundred thousand, yep, yep.
That part, that.
I guess what I'm trying to clear up too is the, it's, I'm not, by June thirtieth, I don't anticipate that that contract being one point one million. I think it's gonna be closer in the neighborhood of about nine hundred thousand. But there still could be some money I get right here at the end of the fiscal year that I'm allowing space for.
Okay, I see.
Okay.
It's hard to be comfortable with all this discussion when we haven't seen a report from the hospital.
To be honest, I I am still. We are, we act as the public health authority, all of these contracts are signed by Lake County, not by Lake Health District. We we are going to have to require, I mean, we already are starting that process, but.
Yeah.
Um, the the reporting of these COVID dollars is more specific. Yep, the reporting of OHA dollars is specific no matter what, COVID just added a whole bigger chunk to it.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then knowing that the hospital has their own COVID money. And in, you know, when are they spending these dollars here, when are they spending public health's money here? How is it crossing, you know, not not double dipping on some staff? There there's some concerns of, and they've obviously had quite a bit of turnover, hand new software, so.
Right.
Yeah, we will, I um.
This is what we've been talking about, why you and I had that meeting, why we went down there to the hospital.
Right.
To have a discussion with with Joey and Char and you.
Then you.
Chief Financial Officer.
Which we tried, we tried to keep that as much mental health geared as possible, but it is, it's both, it is.
Right, but it's it's both.
Mental health hasn't seen the COVID support like public health has, so it's it's much more of a pressing issue right now for public health, the county, yeah. So, I um, Michael Newton and I worked a lot together, I could see her reporting on things. Joey was quite happy to have Michael do all of that, kind of took that big chunk off of his plate. And so right now I'm not, I'll I'll keep tying back in and see who are reporting that can get.
Can you hire another five year person?
Jazz names?
Uh, yeah, Ed.
And Kio or Big Town?
I think he had a little time. We, he was there the day that we went down and met, but I think he'd only just started like that week or a week before.
Yeah.
So, we recognize that it takes time to get up to speed on things and especially with the uh finances that they have to deal with. But, I mean, this is a serious issue.
Yeah.
Why just go, well, Lake County to be on the hook for?
Oh, yeah.
This spit funds.
Yeah, I mean, it's an account, it's a ca- an accounting concern for us. When these dollars pass through us and go to the health district, we have to understand. And these reports have to be given to us in a transparent fashion to the hos- to to us and for me.
As long as we maintain and then don't shift our authority, as long as we are the public health authority and the mental health authority, we are responsible.
Only two counties in the state have given that authority back to the state.
Yeah, or shifted it to somebody else.
Oh, that's true, yes.
So.
Yep, um, any other discussion on that?
So moving on to next fiscal year.
I'm I'm gonna say one thing along the way.
Go ahead.
Maybe we need to be thinking seriously about you know, at least having discussion that we're not getting, we're on the hook for this.
And we are.
Maybe we need to be thinking, giving back the authority back to the state. Maybe not the state's problem, not like happens in Ohio. Well. Let it be known to Lake Health District, we're tapping toes, very impatient, waiting for the report, so that we can make informed decision what to do then. I mean, it's borderline ridiculous.
I'm just wondering if we shouldn't have a special meeting with the hospital board, so, so I I don't believe that they know. And so, I'm just wondering if we should have that, not only about public health, but we need to have that discussion with them about them.
I think you gotta bring this to the top of the forefront.
Yeah.
Let's end it up.
So I think, so my thing would need to do that.
So let's call a a special session maybe?
Yeah.
Help me with this, so you can have that discussion in the hospital, health district.
We keep waiting, we keep waiting.
I want the board.
Yeah.
By the way, it hasn't worked, so.
You want the, which, you want hospital board, the hos- the health district board?
Or the finance.
Pardon me? Or the finance department?
No, we have two different boards. Uh, I, well, I wanna start out with their board. And what do you mean they have two different boards? They have like an administrative board and then they have like a special like finance board. The the administrative board would be over the top of the financial board, correct? I I guess I'm just saying Lake District Hospital Board, you know, Strong, Shine, Saban.
Gerald Stewart.
Gerald Stewart, Chesner, all those guys, we need to have a meeting with them, prompt a special meeting. And so, I'm done, we've been, we've been trying to get this happened for, well, since we started.
Yeah, two years. And we have gotten some information, but it's not what we're looking for. It's not the, it's just, it doesn't answer the questions.
Yeah.
And on another note, less drastic, but still important, um. I've done everything I can to try to get Lake District to move out of our annexing market. And as you guys know, it's a five year, it was a five year contract, we still have a couple of years on there. James is able to go up there, cause he lives up there, but for Barry and I, it's really hard to have a meeting with somebody in private on the north end. The planning department needs to be up there more, um, maybe it'd be up there once a week. We have no room, and so with your guys' permission, I would like to have Jim Bailey write up an addiction or or something, and even if we have to buy him out of the contract, they have a place to go, it's not like we're, middle health has nowhere to go with it, and I'm just done dealing with it. And so, we, we're, they're holding us virtually hostage as a county up there. We have nowhere to go, they've completely taken over the annex, and there's four sheriff's deputies in a tiny room, you know, um. It's, I just, I need some help, and so, if you guys are cool with that, unless you guys got a better idea.
They have three rooms available to them at the North Lake Health District building, and two of them are good therapy rooms, the prep with privacy walls and everything that they installed specifically for middle health. The other room is a reception, um, office that has a window, uh, but you can easily fix that with privacy screen and soundproofing and.
I I heard they started paying that.
They did, they did pay.
Couple, started in a couple of months ago, I think.
Or last month, maybe even.
But yet they remain empty.
Correct.
And then keep, I was from doing anything in the annex as far as you count. You know, I wanna be able to have a commissioner's office up there where any of us could go one day a week or whatever we need to do. I wanna have the planning department up there and Kenny up there, those guys can, how much work is your, you guys doing up there? And we're we're making.
One in thirds probably right now, I don't know, I'm just saying.
And we're making all those people from the north end, I have to come clear it out here, and we should be providing new service to them. And, you know.
Well, unfortunately, the way the contract was written, there is no out clause. So, we'll have to see what, if that makes sense. But, we don't, we don't, my personal opinion is we don't wanna write any more contracts or agreements without an out clause, one nine percent. It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
That's the only one I've found so far that we didn't have.
We'll see where it takes.
Yeah, never seen another one like it. So.
But, you know, there's water under the bridge, but we, and can we at least pursue what what we can do, Barry, I mean.
Yeah, as long as it's uh reasonable, I mean, that's money that, right, shouldn't have to be spending on something like that, right?
But what are we gonna do about it? Write it out for two more years?
Yeah, yeah, no, we can't, we can't do that.
I mean, my last email was, they'll move out of we supplier receptionist, why should the county pay for receptionists, you know, and I didn't even respond, because I wasn't doing it very nicely, so. I don't know, I guess I'm just frustrated, I don't know what to do about it, so.
Quite taping. So with that said, when will you set up a meeting with that board?
Five minutes.
Thank you very much.
That's why I was asking questions.
So we, a joint uh special session perhaps here, would this be a good?
Yeah, great spot.
Yeah, right, sounds good.
We might have to send out a poll to see when they can all make it, you know, but.
Yeah.
I'd like to have those board here.
Might have to be. So. Good.
Okay, so the next resolutions before you are for the twenty one twenty two fiscal year. So the first order of business is actually adopting the budget. By law, by Oregon law, these resolutions have to be passed before July first, or else technically we can't open our doors for business, because we're incurring costs without the appropriation law behind the law. So this resolution twenty one, oh, sorry, twenty twenty one dash zero three does four things for our budget. Number one, it adopts in totality, that's the fifty eight million, five hundred sixty nine thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. The second thing it does is it appropriates by fund and department and category. So this is where I was talking about earlier. Um, the county at one point in time would appropriate general fund departments in total, not by these different categories. What the appropriation rules do is that is the maximum amount that can be spent in that category. You cannot go over that without a formal action by the board to have the authority to spend more. So this is a a maximum, okay, there's no, there's no ten percent way I create that in houses, like no, this is a dollar maximum amount. And the action should be taken before the expenditure is incurred, so. So by um fund and department.
And by action taken, you mean a request for additional?
A resolution passed by the board. And our our staff is pretty good about that, they they know there's a lot of communication, you know, and I, what were we on? Twenty twenty dash fourteen as far as resolutions, the first four of those are the adoption process. So really, there was only ten requests throughout this fiscal year for appropriation authority changes. And you know, that's, the budget is a living document, like it it, things changed during those twelve months, and so COVID happened. You know, grant funds come through and and we make changes, so our staff actually does pretty well with this, um. The other thing this uh resolution does is it cate- okay, it imposes the tax. So this is the the direction to our assessor to go ahead and build the um taxes at our maximum permanent rate of three dollars point seven six one nine per thousand of assessed value. So, budget law and budget committee rules changed um in the nineties with with a lot of school district issues and and taxation issues. And then it set our permanent rate. So really, that that, setting that rate came out of the budget committee's hands when the state changed that law. However, the budget committee could do something less. Never seen it, never heard it, don't know that it ever would happen, but it's important to understand that that's really the only room the budget committee has these days, is to do something less than that permanent, sorry. The next thing this resolution does is it categorizes the tax. This is another um part of all of those tax law changes in the nineties. There are maximum amounts that can be assessed on properties if it's based on general government services versus education services. So we have to tell the assessor, our our permit rate, this amount is for general, the general government limitation. So, um, you don't have to uh make a motion for each one of these aspects of this resolution, you can approve the whole resolution. I just wanted to explain what all it does. And then this sets, like I said, the spending limits for the next fiscal year unless other actions.
Um, real quick, and also on the uh this budget adoption sheet, is that reflecting the seven hundred thousand um dollar resolution that we're looking at for public health?
Two separate fiscal years, seven hundred thousand is for the fiscal year right in right now.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
But, good, good point, if you look at uh. If you look at, uh, public health, which is on page three and five,
Three, yeah.
It says one million dollars.
Yeah.
That's because we have seen so much COVID money come through. I, we budgeted much more for next year. This year we budgeted four hundred and fifty six thousand. So that's, that's why that's so high.
Good.
Yeah. You know, that, that, we know the one thing, couple of things that we will be changing in this budget for next year specifically will probably be the ARPA dollars, the one point five. Currently it's sitting in fund one oh three. And if you look at this appropriation, it says general, fund one oh three, general capital projects, materials and services, one point five million dollars. I'm not sure yet that that one point five will come out as materials and services. I don't know how we'll actually spend that. So based on decisions made, this got me a change. The other thing to point out too is in county services, in general fund, that personnel services of ninety four thousand includes the nuisance position. So once there's a formal decision made of where, where that's going to reside, we may be doing a resolution to actually pay for any appropriate funding department. Remember when we first built this position, we weren't exactly sure what it was going to be. So this was a placeholder. Okay? So it, it's okay when we make the decision, we'll move it. But just pointing out a couple of those things that I know will be changing most likely. Okay, that's, so we'll take action on that tomorrow. The last resolution, and sorry again to throw this at you yesterday. This is a housekeeping resolution. It's twenty twenty one dash zero four. This, um, is required by the governmental accounting standards board. Uh, several years ago nationally, they tried to get all local governments to use their fund accounting system the same. And so what they, what they ask to do.
I'll never remember.
Okay. But that, there it is, there's a header. Um, so what the governmental accounting standards board asks local governments to do is if your dollars are general in nature and do not have specific legislation requiring them to be in their own special revenue fund, that they're all in general fund. We have a few funds that we had out in what are called special revenue funds that don't have that legislative need to be there. The museum, the landfill, the roundup association, and our business loan program. So what this policy does is say, okay, these are kind of general fund dollars, but we're going to commit certain balances for their fund purposes for the following fiscal year. Uh, we're getting to the point where landfill is primarily supported by their own revenues, not just general fund. So their classification may change in a few years and actually be in the enterprise fund.
So they wouldn't even be on this list.
They wouldn't be on this list. The other thing this, uh, policy does is in these are accounting, accounting terms, it says when dollars are spent in a fund, we're spending the restricted dollars first. So the grand dollars, the, the specific dollars, we're always going to spend that first. And then we move down this list. So lastly, we spend like unrestricted funding. The, the one that this comes up in periodically is veteran services fund. They have specific state dollars that have to be spent on veteran services. General fund is actually required to support them to a certain level. We, by this policy, get to say our general fund dollars are what's spent last. So we can, we can always report that, yes, we're spending these grand dollars first. And that policy helps us with that as well. And it is something we have to do every year, but realistically, we have to commit it. We do it in July, but. Got it on there.
Sounds good. I don't even remember from last year. I forgot.
Wow, last year, last year.
Yeah, I don't, I forgot a lot of last year.
Any questions about?
No. The answer was my questions this morning, unless you guys have one.
Is it right or else you, or else you?
Exactly, very informative.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yes.
All right, so Darwin, in any case, how are you doing today?
All right.
All right, good.
So, I'm gonna be starting.
Do you want to take a break for five minutes first?
I'm good. So during the budget time, um, during our budget hearings, I'll, I'll, the fact that we had updated our fee schedule since at least two thousand and fourteen and most of the fees on our fee schedule have been updated since at least two thousand and seven. So at that meeting, it was discussed that I would bring back to you guys, uh, you know, maybe a proposal from me, um, also some examples from other counties, of which I've sent you guys an updated draft of, of, uh, what I thought were reasonable, um, updates to our fee schedule, um, since, you know, the time, um, has elapsed since they've been last updated. So also I presented to you guys, uh, Clamott County's, uh, fee schedule will go effective, uh, from what I've been told, uh, July first, as well as, uh, a study of the surrounding counties. Uh, two, Clamott County, which, um, Clamott and the Shutes.
Douglas, Jackson.
Yeah, and some of those would, would be also adjacent to us, those two I mentioned. Harney County's, uh, code hasn't been updated, you know, fee schedule hasn't been updated since other than for solar and, um, energy projects such as wind, which they had a few applications for, hasn't been updated since before I started with them in two thousand and six. So, uh, other than those two things. So, uh, there are a few counties, uh, that, uh, are also looking to update their fee schedules, uh, that I reached out to and I've got some information from them. From, from our discussion, you know, most of the fees would, would be roughly doubled. Um, there are a couple additions, um, that I, I thought would be also most appropriate. Um, when, uh, we have not had, uh, these types of, uh, fees in the past. I'm trying to find my recent printed ones real quick. Some of those include the luck statement, um, sign off, which is, a luck statement is a land use compatibility statement, which is used for, uh, water right transfers, uh, OF grants, other, other documentation that's needed by other agencies to say that's in land use compliance. Um, and so, you know, that's usually a quick review, uh, but it is something that, uh, normally takes a little bit of staff time to, you know, review, then sign, e- email, scan in email back to those agencies, um, or individuals that bring them in to the counter. Um, billing permit review for compliance, uh, you know, it's, uh, been long established at twenty five dollars. Um, that, that's easily, uh, you know, processed it. That should more reflect what, what it's actually taking, less than normal as well. Uh, appeals, um, a- as well as Lula remand hearings. No, thankfully, this is rare when we get these, uh, but, um, our appeals do, you know, planning commission have been a hundred and fifty. ORS establishes the maximum, um, for, uh, administrative appeals as being two hundred and fifty by, by ORS. Um, and then so the second level appeals, you know, a decision appeal to county commissioners could be as much as, uh, five hundred plus actual cost up to a thousand and half the cost of, of, um, of things over a thousand. So that's kind of what has been proposed in there. Uh, which, which again i- is the same for like a Luba remand hearing. Um, which again, we've never charged for in the past, so this will be, um, we could help to accurately reflect the cost of one of these programs.
So we're only going to cut in on you a little bit.
Yep.
So explain that to us, why we want to increase that. So, so in short, it's, we have to charge for the appeal process, Lula or anything else. And it takes Darwin sometimes weeks getting that information that we're not charging for. Also, I would like to put something on there for the fact that, so we don't get frivolous appeals. You know, it's, if, if they have a legit appeal, they're going to pay for it. If, if it'll stop the frivolous ones that are just, you know, somebody doesn't want something next to them or whatever. And so that's kind of why I wanted that on there.
Yeah, so we hope, we hope that we don't get appeals, you know, planning commission or myself, whoever that lower, um, ruling body is, would present staff report findings that, that, you know, support the case in a way that, that says this is defensible and that it's not in any way, you know, circumventing the law and that it's, it's appropriate for the surrounding area. Um, you know, that, that's what we try to do. And unfortunately, sometimes it, it doesn't, isn't presented well in a case, um, so we end up field up.
So this document that you've given us, this is your updated draft of what you're proposing?
Yeah, one of the, one of the other most major additions to this, um, if you go on page one, um, under the planning permit request halfway down on page, um, is utilities solar. This is, uh, a, a fee that's a new proposal and it's per acre fee in addition to the application. So, uh, of per acre fee meaning any amount of disturbed land that's going to get sold on it would have an additional per acre cost to it. Um, the Shutes County, um, Clamott County, other counties have added this fee, um, to their solar project. And I, the only clarification I haven't got yet from those counties is this, as, as, uh, Ken Cooper, um, reminded board of, is that the state took away the ability to charge a structural permit for solar, um, at, uh, you know, blanket for the whole state. So, so individual counties can go and add that fee back in to charge for construction, um, inspection and, and permit. Um, not only just site line review and, um, building permit review. Uh, so my, my wonder is if, if counties have gone to adding this fee in, in lieu of that. If, um, if, if it's not in lieu of that and it's also a separate fee, um, then, then we're, we'd be totally appropriate to add this. But then, you know, if Kenny, when he's ready to have you guys add in, um, if it's determined that that's most appropriate to add in a structural review fee, then, then that would be similar in cost from my recollection of, of, you know, just a, a solar project that's been built in the county before. So to put this in perspective, and this is where my agenda summary kind of captures, um, you know, and I just love to talk about enterprise, so, or enterprise, um, fees. But essentially, if we were to add this fee and have a thousand acres of solar each year developed.
Yeah.
Um, my department.
It's a hundred thousand dollar fee.
Yeah, could cover the costs and no longer be general funds support, which is, would be awesome. I mean, to, to think, um, about, uh, especially if it's mainly coming just from one, uh, developing group and not necessarily individual property owners. You know, right now I'm at seventeen five for, um, proposed revenue for next year. Um, we usually exceed that by, you know, a couple thousand or so. But if, if we add this fee schedule in, not including, you know, potentially an acre cost, um, you know, this thirty five thousand would be, you know, another five percent or so, um, that we're saving the general budget, um, general fund budget. But, you know, if we get any amount of solar and have an acre, um, fee on there, it would be, it would be significant. Very helpful.
So, I see where you're going. And the information you've given us, where's Harney County at this?
They are very comparable to where we're at right now.
They're not charging them for it.
No, they're not, they're not charging any kind of proof. And I'm not sure, you know, Brandon, the phone, their planner and I have not yet spoken about, um, this proposal. Um, certainly, you know, we're, it's going to require a hearing, so I'll, I'll soft some, some time to gather more information. I, I sent it out to all the planners who was updating the fees and give me some examples of when, when your last fee update was. Um, about seven or eight, uh, counties replied, um, most did not yet. So, and Harney County did not yet respond to, to my inquiries. So I'll reach out to him by phone to, I'm sure I'll catch him.
So we potentially aren't going to be the best deal of the state?
Yeah, potentially not. I, ours is, I'm proposing lower than those other, um, counties. And, and we historically have been one of the most looked at counties for developing solar. Um, I've got an application we just submitted to me for New Sun Energy. I won't go into those details, but that will come before you. That's a full exception, uh, later, uh, late summer, um, after those are planned commissions. So, you know, there's still solar projects, you know, lingering out there that will look to be developed. As you know, Blue Hornet also has publicly, publicly announced that they are looking to, you know, no longer use those four sites, but go to one site, um, outside of their data land as well. So, that is in the works and should be, should be here soon, so. But yeah, so we'll, we've got a lot going on in both those projects. I mean, uh, um, one is three hundred and twenty acres, um, uh, and the other, you know, is over a thousand acres. So this fee also, I, I wondered, should we be charging upfront? Or should we charge it at time of, it's middle of the development notifications? Um, because, you know, a lot of projects, if you look at our, we look at our list of solar projects that have been approved in the county, more than half of them haven't been built and very likely many of those won't ever be built. And so if we're to charge this fee upfront and it never gets built, you know, what? You know, I think there would be some pushback from those sort of, just to do it that way. And so we just charge if it truly gets built, you know, and we'll know that by the time they submit building permits, that it's going to be built.
Let me understand though, why do we need a per acre fee?
Why do we need it? Uh, there's been a lot of discussion that, you know, solar is a pay their, you know, way and, and, uh, you know, certainly they're the highest fees that we have, um, already. We don't, we wouldn't necessarily need it, but it, it's a way to help recover cost, um, for just, you know, our program that I'm running. Um, but also, you know, to help just, you know, provide, you know, all of our citizens better services. And that way if we're collecting from, you know, somebody that's wanting to develop in our county, which historically hasn't been done all that much, uh, it's just a great way. And they have lots of money, as we've seen, you know, to do these projects. Um, and this is still a very small amount of their overall budget. I mean, these are multimillion dollar projects and this is just some, a one way to help recover, you know, some of the costs, um. You know, the, yeah, and it's a good question because we're also getting, you know, uh, you know, the pilot program, you know, um, taxes that way. Um, this is almost, you know, in a way, almost maybe just a first tax before it's, you know, truly developed, but.
Well, Har- um, Shutes County charges one hundred and twenty seven bucks. And that has slowed them down as far as solar development. Um, what were you telling me previous to the couple weeks ago? Harney County just got its first solar project.
They've had a couple. They, they, they've had a couple that's been built. They're actually on the grid right now as we roll into, um.
But, but what was stopping them from getting it? Wasn't there some other things that they had going on?
Um, I don't know, a whole lot stopped them. I mean, Obsidian Sun Projects over there as well, New Sun Sun Projects there. Um, I think they have three on the grid right now that I can think of. You know, they, they were definitely slower than we were. Uh, when I first got here in two thousand and eleven, you know, Lake County was already ahead of, of most other counties and, and seeing solar, uh, proposals. And at that time when I left, we, we didn't see no solar applications. We'd seen three wind projects approved. But, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it, it usually has to do with just site location. But, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it it usually has to do with just site location, landowner agreements. And and when I say site locations mainly, is there transmission close and available? Is there, um, capacity on that, on the line to add additional, uh, energy contracts to it, so.
So I guess what Commissioner Schubert is saying is if we charge this hundred dollars an acre, is that gonna make us less competitive like with Carney County?
It's a big question that I haven't asked yet, you know, our solar folks, um, you know, the the projects that are out there, maybe this will push them to get built instead of maybe a different project. Um, it's it's always hard to see, you know, you brought up the shoots as a hundred twenty-seven an acre. Um, Clamott, which is going effective July first, will be at a hundred fifteen acre. Um, you know, you know, sometimes other counties are wanting to update their fees and some of my responses from some of the counties, um, were like planists is like, I'm glad you're going to update your fees, cause you're bringing our average down, you know, surrounding county average down. So their averages, they actually took us out of their average equation, if you see the table, average without Lake County, uh, of their surrounding counties, and some of them were significantly higher, um, for just simple, simple land uses. So, I think Carney County ought to do an update. I thought that when I was there, uh, the same ideas I had there as staff, uh, were the same I'm having here, is that, you know, we, you know, every year, we don't increase our fees and the cost to run by department goes up because of, you know, insurance and, you know, costs of living increases, things like that. Um, then then we're actually losing money by not increasing those fees, so. So it's, you know, knowing that we haven't updated in many years, we need to and other counties need to as well. You know, a lot of them wanna stay the lowest, and I think Carney County would still, as as we have historically been the lowest. A lot of other rural counties try to stay around that same, Baker counties were the same as what we have right now.
Yeah.
Um.
So didn't you tell me that Clamott County took Lake County out of the average of those five?
Yeah, yeah.
Because of.
Called eight.
We brought the average down way too low.
Yeah.
So, well, this is just up for discussion. You know how we've had a battle over irrigated farm ground? If we charge, put it in our ordinance or our fees, that if somebody did get through, went through Bluebird or whatever else to get an irrigated farm ground, that they would have to pay five hundred bucks an acre for irrigated farm ground or a thousand bucks an acre.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, it could be a separate, uh.
And then that way it kinda protects us, and if they go around us again, they'll have to pay a pretty high price for it.
Yeah, I was thinking the same way for, uh, wind power. You know, I just went to Reading this weekend to go over, what is it? Hatchet Mountain, those big wind towers that they have all on there, that's not pretty exciting.
Yeah, went up on the gorge too, and Chi Cities, going back from Chi Cities and joining.
Well, anybody's never gonna push that here.
You know, like, oh my gosh.
After yesterday.
Yeah, the hillside.
But if we have something in place already, where with wind, you're gonna pay or with irrigated farm ground, you're gonna pay a very steep price.
Yeah, and so my original point when I asked about Carney County is that we're not, we won't be the best deal town, we're in the state. Uh, so just trying to decipher do we need it? But it sounds like it's a pretty common practice at this point. And yet, if we do establish what you're recommending at a hundred dollars an acre, um, it's still one of the better deals out there.
And I think this will help those other counties that opt to update their fees get there. A lot of them said, hey, we're following this topic and.
It's funny that they're not.
Yeah, cause they, I think most counties want to do the right thing and and, you know, not have to be fully general fund supported. Most counties of our size, population wise, are gonna be in the, you know, they're only recovering about twenty-five to, you know, thirty percent of their actual cost to run their programs. You know, if we could, you know, continue to get solar and and have this be in there, to get even over fifty would be amazing. Um, and and if you get closer to seventy-five, a hundred, that would be, uh, wonderful, I think. I mean, if you think of a hundred thousand dollar savings, to the general fund, that's that's a position that, you know, that you know, we can, we can try to figure out where that best would would help the citizens. I mean, we're not about nuisance of the cost of a hundred thousand dollars. You know, some of that may be reimbursable. I think we're gonna find maybe some of it isn't. Uh, I don't mean to compare apples, and we're just here, but it's any amount of revenue we can continue to to help generate for, uh, for industry that continues to want to be here. Um, I think it's, would be tremendous help to the county.
Well, even if we did raise it to your recommendation, we're still, well, average for adults besides hurting.
What is, what is everyone else at the, on the, uh, utility solar?
Yeah, so so the shoots and and Clamott are only two good examples, some that are nearby. Uh, I didn't, I don't have that information right in front of me, but a hundred twenty-seven for the shoots, a hundred fifty.
I didn't see it on there.
So, you know, twenty.
It's in the bottom. Oh, is it on the bottom? Okay.
Twenty-seven percent less than one and.
I was gonna put theirs in a one fifteen acre.
Mm-hmm, so July first.
Um.
Yeah, they, in this one table that you've got, you where you see Carney County, they're basically, you know, a thousand. That's that's where we, in two thousand fourteen, we had that same, same base fee for solar, um, for applications up to twenty-five hundred. I've been charging twenty-five hundred the last couple of years now upfront. Um, I've got a check for five thousand right now from a new sum for the conditional use permit and a, um, the goal exception, um, which is two separate applications tied into one, but, uh, this, you know, it's.
Does that fit the zoning ordinance that protects amendment, or is that separate?
Yeah, that's that's part of what that, yeah, yeah, text amendments of goal exceptions, consider text amendment.
Okay, so my, if we're done talking about solar, uh, but let's just use an example of a landowner that wants to, uh, develop an industry or business on his property, his or her property. Now we're talking about a five thousand dollar fee for a zone ordinance change, which, that that's a fifty percent increase from your previous request, right, at about twenty-five hundred?
So in in understanding exactly what a goal, you know, change or or text amendment that would be to a landowner, most of the time landowners, you know, if they wanna, you know, say run a home occupation business, some kind of business, that's just a conditional use permit, it's not that full-blown text amendment. Unless they really wanna change the zone, you know, maybe partition their land out further and, you know, do some major development. But if they're just wanting to run, you know, a home business, or if they wanna establish their home on on land that maybe didn't before, uh.
Okay.
These are the smallest fees that we have.
So what what is the proposed CUP? You could do one.
Conditionally used.
Conditional use permit?
For type ones, four hundred, it being proposed, right?
Yeah, so and that's more of a.
So you're going up a hundred fifty bucks?
In, in non, yeah, non, uh, resource zones, which are, you know, like our rural residential, something like that, um, commercial zones, industrial zones, um, there's a, there's a few administrative reviews that I can handle, um, that that the ordinance allows me to to, uh, be the decision maker on, um, whether whether, you know, written out uses that, uh, that are more, you know, don't require, uh, discretion. Um, that's, uh, even on some of the other applications, the planning commission in general, so. And then, yeah, the planning commission type reviews are, would went from two fifty to five hundred. Again, looking at, you know, inflation over, you know, since at least two thousand seven till now, you know, it's giving you a closer know what it would would have been in my years, compounding, so.
So looking at this.
And this will stay, this this proposal was, you know, not likely not to change for many years, so, um, it's it's something that, you know, I think we ought to set, you know, hey, this this will be our fee schedule and just say, hey, it's in five years or till two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we'll start a new, you know, updated schedule, and then maybe we'll just grow a certain percentage. You know, every five years, we just say, hey, we're gonna increase by.
I think we'd be contradicting ourselves if we locked ourselves in for five years.
Yeah, we're not doing that anymore.
Yeah, yeah, with an applause.
Yeah.
I hear you, that's coming.
Yeah, so one additional question I have, let me make your little spreadsheet here.
Sure.
You look at the far right side and it says projected revenue from fees with increase. And projected revenues without increase, we're talking about twenty-six thousand dollar increase.
So this this is, I I should clarify, this is not our table, this is Clamott's, this is part of what I got from Clamott. So this is for their county, their projected.
But they're just showing Lake County.
Yeah, yeah, they're showing Lake County as.
This isn't your proposal.
No, 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 this is not my my data for what we would be increasing. I'm 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 saying that we would, you know, go from seventeen five to thirty-five with these increases. You know, seventeen thousand five hundred to thirty-five thousand as well, what I would like.
Projected revenue.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And that's not.
And that's not including the one hundred per, yeah, that's not including the solar. We've got that solar, I mean, uh, you know, the the New Some project that I've just got submitted now, you know, the fee schedule will be after that, but as an example, that would be thirty-two thousand for the three hundred twenty acres. Thirty-two thousand extra, so I mean, that hundred per acre is is a significant increase. Cause most projects I'm seeing now are at least three hundred twenty acres, cause that's the threshold that people can go up to before they need a goal exception. But this ends up being a goal exception, because it's also adjacent to.
So, I'm not sure that it's a significant increase to the budget of the of the solid developer. I mean, or or acres, say, you know, and you're coming to about four thousand dollars, which is is really peanuts. I mean, and I mean, the the contribution to our roads, uh, you know, needs to be made there. I mean, it should be made to your department too, especially for basing potential re, um, remands and appeals possibly. So, no, I, I don't know if it really takes us out of the competitive range, honestly, because it is so miniscule overall. I mean, their actual cost.
They're multimillion dollar projects and this is a very small cost to them.
And forty acre with solar is a pretty expensive big project, and you're talking four thousand acres, uh, four thousand dollars total for that fee.
Yeah, I mean, just limited.
Well, I mean, is your department away from straining the general fund or any of that, free some of those dollars up?
So, oh, and that that's one thing I did bring up before, if you're looking back at the table, some counties have a per megawatt instead of a per acre fee.
Yeah.
So that's, that's also interesting, I mean, the most are ten megawatt project now, so, um, he could take ten megawatts.
The potential is increasing, and and I think, you know, we just, I just had this huge discussion with the solar company that they wanted a road use agreement and they 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 wanted to see if they could maybe base something off per acre instead of per megawatt, because the megawatts are going up and everything else. So, it's a one-time fee, this is not like reoccurring here, this is just a one-time thing. And for roads per se, a lot of that, a lot of the impact is based on gravel trucks that are coming in and they hauling large loads and the larger acreage, the more loads you're going to need. So they were actually leaning towards a per acre charge rather than a per megawatt. So, and I, and and in that sense, I I think the per acre is probably a better deal for us. And just stick with the formula that the other counties are using, and that way it's comparable. But I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to hear, uh, our road managers' perspective on that.
Uh, his perspective would probably be, um, so you guys are gonna make this transfer to the road department?
Yeah, because that's where the money needs to go.
Right, but if we save the dollars, like you're saying, if we can get them more into the back, into the black, and we can show that it's because the revenue is generated from fees like this, we can, we'll also see costs at the road department, because I don't think that this road use agreement is going to capture the entirety of the cost. One of the things that came up during the road use agreement discussion was, okay, if we make this solar company pay for all the improvements to a road, because they're going to use it, and so, and then we bring it up to a place where you can do easel counts and everything else, and we build this road up so it can actually take those loads and it's no longer just a coal paint overlay. Um, how can we justify making the next company pay that to do the exact same thing to the road that was, that was done literally two years before? And and then if we give them a special rate, now we're basically, we're slapping the solar company in the face, the one that just happened to be the first one to go build one out that road. So, it's got, I don't think we're gonna capture all of our costs with the road use agreements, but we don't have to either, especially if we're looking at these other things. We just have to capture some of it, so that we're not putting all that impact on your department, on the road department, and having to leave you guys to come up with the entire sum. If there's at least a contribution made to these roads, because we know that so solar over, uh, in the long run, it's going to be very beneficial for the county. And the main impact of the roads is gonna be kind of a one-time deal. Everything after the construction is over.
Just gonna be my first solar.
Yeah, right, because nobody wants to be this first solar one, solar company, though.
So that's, that's why this fee, I mean, you know, it's, we'll collect it, but you guys may use one of your market for certain, you know, distribution to other county departments, I mean.
We could, but if you free up general fund dollars by decreasing your, um, it, so that transfer, same thing happens, so we can just have the decision whether or not to make transfers to the road department or the general fund.
Well, I'm I'm just thinking if you were this.
Which we don't do.
Which we we used to and now we don't do it anymore.
We can only transfer to the reserve.
We, yeah, we we usually transferred, yeah, we always transferred to the reserve.
And I'm just thinking, on, you know, PR side of it, that if you did say, hey, you know, we're collecting the speed to put it in these other areas that might just go over, fall off, what nicer? My fund, you know, saving a bunch of money from the general fund does, you know, it's not getting everybody super excited, but. Anyway, so.
Okay, so, next steps then, uh, I see we have required hearings on this or proposed fee increases.
Yeah, if you guys give me direction to start going into that process with the proposed, then I'll get that covered.
Um, one last question on that, do we wanna pursue putting an additional fee for solar on irrigated land? Just a couple of things.
Yeah, I think I think we should.
I, that's what I'm, I'm.
Well, I mean, it's open right now, we haven't started the the process yet, so.
Yeah, so.
Five thousand an acre.
I think it needs to be substantially higher.
There has been.
Five thousand or substantially higher than a hundred?
Substantially higher.
I was, I was being sarcastic.
I I would be opposed to five hundred or a thousand bucks an acre on your irrigated farm ground. Anything.
But is that setting the precedence that we could entertain? The, we're being.
Cause we don't even wanna entertain that. No, but the one I'm looking at is, if the things that didn't happen, that happened, you know, where they went around the county.
Right, right.
And if they go around the county and succeed, we have this in there where at least we're gonna get something for it, you know? They just didn't succeed with this program, but that's not stopping another source coming in and, and doing, you know.
So I will.
It's not, why don't we put a ridiculous number on that, ten thousand?
Anything over our two neighboring counties that are at a hundred fifty and a hundred twenty-seven acre is gonna be kind of ridiculous, cause their fees are already way higher. But but I will tell you that that, uh, one of our smaller counties, uh, in the state, either Sherman or Wheeler, one of those, you know, closer to the gorge, priced themselves out of doing solar, because they they, in their fee schedule, it says per panel install fee. And it's like, whoa, jeez, it's gonna be multimillion dollar, um, installation, you know, cost. So, you know, yeah, we can definitely try to, you know, say.
So, so let's, let's, let's talk about this, so let's, this is a way to protect this from this happening.
Yeah.
Okay, so you got an eighty acre parcel, uh, they wanna put solar on irrigated land. Thousand bucks an acre, it's only eighty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's a drop in the bucket still again. I just, that's why I.
Yeah, it's not.
We're not opposed, we don't wanna oppose solar development where, where we, you know, it's on land that you're really never gonna grow anything, or will be able to make a living on.
So, what was the number that you used there? Did you say ten thousand dollars per acre, Barry?
Marked it.
Oh, did you say ten thousand? Well, that's, oh, okay. Well, even at five, you're talking four hundred grand. And at ten thousand, you're talking eight hundred thousand. If it's on eighty acres.
So.
So, I mean, that's, is that, I don't know if it's.
I think this is a, I'm curious to see what legal counsel says about how this fee schedule makes, you know, uh. Legal sense to, to add it, I think we could probably add any fee we wanted, and that's fine, but, um. You know, any, any applicant can still come forward, even if that price is ridiculous, and they say, hey, this is the best, but. At a county level, they still have to do an alternative land analysis, and this is where it had to go to. If, if it exceeds even twenty acres on irrigated land, so, uh, you know, we, we talked about that one project that, that was going through a state process and avoided the county process. Um, they avoided the county, I think, because it just wouldn't have been approved. Um, and so, any other applicant that comes forward and tries to be on irrigated land exceeding the threshold of what's allowed to be on irrigated land, I don't think it'll get approved in the first place. I mean, cuz they have to prove that this is the only land available to do this on, and that's not gonna be, that is not gonna be the case, and. This board would not find that to be the case, and cuz you ultimately would be the deciding body on an application that was on irrigated land that exceeds twenty acres, and. You're not gonna approve it.
But I mean, you're saying that, because you're EFSEC again.
Yeah, but so, we can't charge your EFSEC application, that's, that's a part of order.
Why? But what's the harm in doing this thing if it's not gonna happen?
No, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
Because this, this. Sorry, I didn't mean it.
Well, no, I, I'm just saying that there's a lot of misunderstanding, that's why when we got the solar committee together, which we meet again tonight. When I started explaining the rules behind, hey, this alternative land analysis is a big deal, uh, uh, you know, and we're talking about updating our local solar rule. The state's thresholds are already in place, and if you can't meet them, then you're not gonna be able to get approved, and so, I never thought.
Never did not again.
But in, in EFSEC, I'm not, I'm, again, that's their process, and that's, they, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. We can only make the great comments that you did, saying, hey, we don't wanna hop irrigated land, and we think that the alternatives. Uh, goal exception language should have to be applied to this as well, um, which the, the EFSEC process is separate. They, they don't use an alternative lands analysis to do a goal exception on.
But, but that's exactly what I mean, if they go through an EFSEC process and it passes through EFSEC. We're out. We're out the irrigated farm ground and any, for at least twenty years, yeah.
So, that's why the billing department also needs to adopt their fee, and maybe they have some kind of fee that pay on irrigated land, the billing department's gonna charge, cuz. These are still only on a land use application that goes through the county. If it goes through EFSEC, I don't get to charge this, so that's, that's the harder part about this. It's similar to, you know, some appeals, I don't get to charge an appeal fee for me to prepare the record to get the logo. Was one example that maybe one county is doing that, I don't know how they're actually able to do that, cuz it's a state.
So, you're saying that if you were to do a fee like this, maybe it wouldn't be in planning, it would be in building department?
So, I think the billing department would wanna look at, once you develop, hey, this is going to be this astronomical fee to develop, you know.
So, rather than have it through plans.
Site plan review and.
You would do it through building process.
Well, because that, everybody would still have to come back through the billing department, get their inspections, they wouldn't, they still wouldn't have to go through all.
The land use, that, that would be done in the determination, but once that's determined through land use and what the site is actually going to be on and everything else.
Land use on, for sure.
Then you have the facts to justify the fee itself.
And, and so, this is kind of where I was wondering, when do we charge this fee, because.
Right.
If it's a planning fee per acre, maybe it's part of the billing to permit, submit all.
Okay.
Because then you can say, hey, this is, you know, cuz I do a fifty, it's twenty-five right now, but I'm proposing fifty, site plan review. But the site plan review might be, you know, per acre cost of, you know, a hundred on non-irrigated, non-arable lands. And you have ten thousand per acre on, on irrigated, or whatever the, you know, price might be, but it's at the building department facial that.
But you.
Even in EFSEC process is still going to get charged that per acre cost.
Right, so, and, and once that, and you won't, you'll always get into terminal things until it goes through EFSEC, and it is determined that it's on irrigated apartment.
Which is what we want.
So, at that point, then the next thing they're going to do is go to the building department, so that's where you wanna have that fee.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
I do think that the premise is really good where we're going here, because this is essentially what I tried to do in that, uh, one-five-four bill. That just passed last night out of committee, and it's moving on to the Senate floor, uh, for a vote, which is to extend the sunset date for the pilot program. Now, everyone wanted the sunset extended, but the fact that, you know, Newson came in, and they wanted the rate from seven thousand dollars per megawatt reduced to fifty, uh, thirty-five hundred. And then incremental step downs of five percent per year, that got thrown out, and then they, but they did reduce it to fifty-five hundred. So, we are looking at a reduction from that seven thousand per megawatt to fifty-five hundred, but what I wanted was, I, I, I submitted an amendment. And it was eventually thrown out once it got to the Senate by the solar companies and the lobbyists, and it basically said. Fine, you can have your fifty-five hundred per megawatt, but on irrigated farmland, it would be, um, ten thousand per megawatt. And, and that, and I felt like that was at least de-incentivizing it, but that wasn't approved, they threw it out. But then again, the issue that I had with it, and the excuse that was given to me was, well, that's only for the pilot, so solar companies would just not be the pilot anymore. But this way, no matter what agree, what you go under, whether it's the pilot, whether it's the SIP. If it's through the building department, once they construct and they get approval through EFSEC or whoever else, that fee is going to be there. So, if, if you guys think that the building department would be a better place to do it than that, maybe.
I, I don't care where, what department it is, I'm gonna charge him ten grand an acre.
I totally agree. Go ahead, Melanie.
So, one thing, well, that you guys might wanna think about is the building department to, I helped Ken with his fee for the source anything, but the state has to approve his fees. For, um, for building, so, I just want you guys to be aware that the state still has approval of his fees.
Yeah, and they don't.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying that it's a, a building department fee, it's just, it's collected at the time they submit their building, um, applications, and it's a separate, it's a separate.
Okay.
Fee, I don't think that the state would have to approve it, it's a planning review fee.
You know what, I'm in favor of the ten thousand, we're gonna have some hearings.
I, I had a feeling you'd say.
And, uh, if, if we get huge opposition because people are saying, you can't, you know, you're dictating what I can't do on my property. You know, we gotta listen, and hear their argument, but we heard loud and clear on the, uh, previous one, Blue Marmont, that people did not want. Solar on irrigated.
Right.
This gives us at least a level of protection.
Well, I, I told, I told the CEO guy from Blue Marmont, find one person besides the property owner.
Well, still some.
That supports irrigated farm ground and all go for.
Never heard of. Great.
So, but yes, important question too, is this, you know, raising our fees is really making us not competitive and maybe stop development, and. You know, for the, for the non-solar type application, large scale development type, uh, application, I, this isn't gonna change anything, I think. You know, we're, we're seeing such an influx right now, it's a perfect time to do it, uh, which may, uh, help slow things down where we're getting such a huge. Wouldn't slow it down necessarily, might just level it out again, uh, or at least keep a, a level of increase that we're wanting to see. You know, appropriately managed, uh, in a timely manner. Um, but there, there's still some who believe we already have enough solar, so, you know, if, if for some reason we got a little less, you know, but it wouldn't hurt a lot of the public's opinion. Uh, but I think, again, the public doesn't understand, you know, from roughly nine hundred acres of actual solar developed right now, would be almost a million dollars.
Current, just shy.
Current year, yeah, so it's like, you know, um, that's a significant amount of money that would have been new revenue coming from the county. For only the last, you know, seven years now that solar's actually developed large scale.
Thanks, Darrell.
Yeah.
So, you'll add that.
Yeah, I'll add it, and I'll also add just a little line that says, you know, uh, collected at the time of, of, uh, construction or snow.
Perfect. Do we need to talk about effective date?
Yeah, yeah, let's do talk.
Looks like you, uh, wrote January one.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I'm a little worried if I give it a very short date, all the applicants out there is gonna create a whole lot of extra work, plus I gotta change applications on. And put them up on our website again, there's a lot of applications still, you know, waiting to be turned in. Um, but also, if it, you know, we, we talked about maybe October first, and that will, I think, just get a whole influx of. And flood of applications coming in by October, and rather extend a little bit so that, you know, we can spread out that flood. A couple of extra months, and, and if a little bit busier, you know, because the flood comes, you know, November, December, then that's okay. But having it, you know, September, October makes it already those busy months.
So, so Darrell, I, I, I get that, I totally get that, but what if we have another solar company come in before.
Yeah.
January one that wants to put it on irrigated farmland, I wanna have that fee in place.
Yeah.
That one in place, I mean.
I, I have no problem with that one, and that'd be a weird motion to, to do it that way, but I, you could totally do it that way, I think.
I'm just trying to do it a minute or something.
Yes, yeah.
Do it a minute.
Does this one affect it, you know, all effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, except for, which is effective, you know, immediately, it's an emergency.
Well, do you get it, go, again, I don't wanna drag this out, because this might, this might also move the solar company that's thinking about irrigated farm ground.
No, I, I agree with you.
We gotta get this going before January first, otherwise it's gonna cost us ten grand an acre.
Honestly, it'd be nice to have this done by November one. Be good before the holidays and everything else, because just, just get.
The whole thing?
Yeah, just get this through the approval process and everything.
I'll get it approved.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, it's gonna take, yeah, a month and a half, whatever, to get approved at the earliest, so it's gonna take a couple of months to get approved, but then still effective date now. Okay. But I think that effective date for solar, yeah, absolutely, immediate.
Okay.
It is possible.
I think Darrell was stating that he needs that extra month.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
For two months.
I really would, we're, we're crazy.
Spread it out, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We had a hiccup in early May, but that hiccup's gone, and we're all speed ahead and a lot of applications. We're like forty-seven right now for the year, there were, you know, our average was fifty-one for, you know. For ten years I've been here, so it's been an average of fifty-one, so we're six months in, almost six full months in, and we're already at the average, so. We're, we're double busy, and, and these are major applications, I've done two goal exceptions the whole time I've been here, and we've got two going to be reviewed this year. We've got two new road names I need to get scheduled for hearings, uh, we've got, I think, a total of seven roads the whole time I've been here, we've got two more this year alone, so. Yeah, we're gonna be busy.
All right.
Yeah.
Sounds good then.
Yeah.
Thanks, Darrell. Uh, do you wanna take a quick five, ten minute break? I need a break.
Five.
Five. All right. Five minute break, we'll come back in a minute, ten dollars.